Okay, it's nine o'clock. The meeting is called to order. The first item on the agenda is invocation. Butch, would you please give the invocation?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet here today. We ask for your blessing and your guidance as we move forward with the community's business. We thank you for your judgment. We thank you for your guidance, and we look forward to operating and doing thy will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance to this great nation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to pledge to Texas?
Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you very much. Bob, we have any presentations this morning? No, not today. I think we have a special proclamation, April of 2014, Child Abuse Awareness Month, and Commissioner Barry is going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Judge. Proclamation, Child Abuse Awareness Month in Hood County, April 2014. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Hood County, whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, whereas it is responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with a child to protect that child's right to safe and nurturing childhood, whereas Hood County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter these problems of child mistreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our communities are stronger when our citizens become more aware of child mistreatment, prevention is available and have become involved in supporting the parents to raise their children in a safe environment. Whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support the families, now therefore be it resolved that I, Darrell Cochran, Hood County Judge and the Hood County Commissioners Court do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Awareness Month in Hood County, Texas, and commend this observance during April of 2014 for the whole month to all citizens of Hood County. Signed on this day, March of 2014, Darrell Cochran, Hood County Judge.
I'll entertain a motion to accept and pass this proclamation.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carried. Thank you very much. Next item is any citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda item? If so, would you please raise your hand or stand up? Sheriff has those forms. Okay. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
I'd like to hear from G-8 from the sheriff, just explanation, please.
Okay, you don't want to pull it off, just hear from him?
Yes, just so he makes public know this is what's going on. We know, but the public needs to know. G-8 Sheriff, would you just explain that to the...I mean, we'll leave it on the consent agenda, but we can let you explain that.
Yeah, Oxey the dog is a dog that we got from Toler. I helped originally in getting that purchase for Chief Cox when he was out there, and then he left office, and the city of Toler and him donated the dog to the county, and we'd been trying to utilize it, having some issues with it, and I believe it's a big liability. I sent the dog off for some training. It's not working out, and I just don't want to create myself any extra liability or the county, so it's time to retire that dog.
And he'll go to the handler, is that correct?
To the handler.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda, A through L, Judge.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout to accept the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Sheriff. Next item on the agenda is to subdivision Rhodes and Platts, Mr. Lenny. Item number one is road ops, and you have nothing there. So item number two is public hearing to consider and take appropriate action on a replat of 7R, 8R, 9R-1, and 10R-1 Fountain Village, Granbury.
Judge, the purpose of this replat in Fountain Village was to relocate building lines, and they did away with, at the bottom of 9R and 10R, they did away with the green area and replatted in those two lots. Staff has reviewed this, and it follows our subdivision regulations, and staff recommends approval of this replat.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to consider this replating of lots in Fountain Village. Does anyone wish to make any comments? Mr. Hall, do you want to make any comments?
I'm just available for any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Hall has submitted a form in favor of this replating, so does anyone else wish to make a comment? Well, then the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replat of 7R, 8R, 9R-1, and 10R-1 in Fountain Village.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout, seconded by Commissioner Barry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action on the final plat of Lot 1, Block 1, Mambreno Storage Edition, 1317 Mambreno Highway in Granbury, Texas.
Judge, Commissioners, staff recommends that you table this item. We were not, we haven't received the corrected plat on this to present to you today, so we ask that you table this item.
Okay, I make a motion that we table it.
Take it.
Seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any further discussion?
Please.
Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carried. Budget and finance. First item is budget line item amendments.
Judge and Commissioners, I did not bring any budget amendments for you today.
Thank you.
But we do have the expenditures for your consideration, the next item on the agenda.
Okay. All right, let's go over those.
The total of these bills for your consideration, Judge and Commissioners, comes to $1,101,790.79. About 47 percent of that is a scheduled payment to CDW Government, Inc., and that is $521,349.93. Of that amount, about the $508,000 was the purchase order that the IT Director has mentioned to you before. This is primarily for electronic equipment in the Emergency Operations Center. To attorneys on the indigent defense appointment, those attorneys are $37,565.41. To Ben E. Keith Company for Jail Groceries, $20,505. To the city of Granbury for utilities, $30,948.95. To Charter Communications, $10,253.57 for telecommunications and data transmitting services. To Election Systems and Software for primary voting contracted services, $16,158.43. To Granbury Hood Economic Development Corporation, a quarterly subsidy of $25,000. To Hood County Committee on Aging, a quarterly subsidy of $18,750. To Hood County Child Protective, $2,500 as a quarterly subsidy. To Hood County Appraisal District, these are our quarterly appraisal and collection To Texas Association of Counties for workers' compensation premiums, $41,892.95. To Tyler Technologies Incorporated, $57,879.44. These represent progress billings on the Tyler ENCODE system conversion that is underway. We are planning to throw the switch on that and go live on March 19th. That's the plan at the present time. To U.S. National Bank Association, $41,140.48. These are for the Voyager Fleet Card fuel purchases. I've provided a payment warrant for each item on the list and provided you with the detailed list. We would ask your permission to pay these bills.
I entertain a motion to ratify paying the bills.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to approve county auditor electronic requisition system
Judge and Commissioners, in conjunction with the planned conversion of our Net Data General Ledger System over to Tyler ENCODE, we would like to take advantage of the opportunity to maximize the operating efficiencies that are available with some new functionality that's going to be made available to us with the Tyler system. This involves very much the purchasing agent and her office.
It would also impact Judge Cochran's office and his operations quite a bit.
What I would propose is that these procedures be approved by you. Under our present circumstances, the judge is required to physically sign every requisition before it comes to the auditor's office to be examined and approved. And what we have right now is a situation where on our Net Data System, a requisition starts out as an electronic message. It's just a request to spend money. Well, then, because of the restrictions of the system, our purchasing agent has to print all of those out, and then that set of documents with the invoice and the purchase order and everything goes back to the department head for receiving and signature. It comes to my office for initial inspection. It goes back to the judge's office for signature, and then we make them available to the treasurer for writing checks, and after court, when the checks are written, we take this packet and it goes back to my office where we scan it back in and turn the whole thing back into an electronic packet. So what we're hoping with the new Tyler system is that we can streamline this process and maximize our efficiency of operations, cut down the amount of paper that we have to print, and allow for the department heads, the requisitioners, the auditor, the judge, and the purchasing agent to affix an electronic approval on these requisitions and purchase orders rather than requiring them to be printed out. They still can be printed out if it's in the best interest of the purchasing office to do so, but that's what I had designed to do. The only objection that I received from the initial procedures that I had given was from the purchasing agent and from our Tyler analyst, that was I was having the judge and purchasing sign those requisition forms simultaneously, and apparently it has to be in a particular path. I didn't want to put anything in the way of the purchasing agent doing her job or having her waiting for the judge before she could issue a purchase order, so I made that revision, and I would be glad for Nelda to address any concerns that she might have about this. But even though the code here does say that the auditor is to write these procedures, it also says that before we can implement them, the court needs to review and approve it.
Let me ask you some questions about this. Does that documentation that Nelda requires, like the prior, you know, to submit the, what is it, FTE, what is that?
RFE.
What?
RFE.
Yes. Does she have to have all of that before this is generated within the system?
I would say she can, but it's not necessary. An RFE is a request for expenditure, which is another term for a requisition. These were implemented some time ago because there were some additional controls needed over purchasing in the view of the purchasing agent at the time. All of this can be done electronically, but if Nelda feels that it is in the county's best interest and purchasing's best interest to continue to utilize paper forms like that, that's certainly up to her discretion to write those rules.
Can that RFE be submitted electronically?
They're supposed to scan their documents and attach it to the electronic requisition the way we understand it, so it could be included in that, in my opinion. I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
Okay, I really like that because we kind of lost a little control there at one time, and I don't like that. I get nervous about that. If I'm going to sign something, I'd like to know what I'm signing for, you know, and I'd like a pretty good description on that thing. Don't just say, you know, something very general.
It requires that they put in more information now. There's no option. They have to be... Now, they could probably write just what they want in there, so we're going to be diligent and make sure there's been the correct information. There's no longer a way to put in a PO to say invoice number. They can't do that anymore. They're going to have to break it down. We are going to have to make some exceptions for, like, the jail groceries. That list would be page after page after page and take forever to input, but we're going to work, try to work through that.
See, I don't want something like, just say tires.
Right.
And when it comes through, it's for a boat trailer or a lawnmower or something that we don't even have. I mean, you know, so that's what I don't want to happen.
Yeah, and I agree.
I know.
What I would recommend, Judge, and purchasing agent already is very diligent about looking at these things, but what I would recommend is that when these requisitions come in, if they don't meet the standards, they should be turned back until they do.
I agree with that. What about payment warrants, which are not purchase orders?
This procedure would address only those things that fall under Local Government Code, Chapter 262, which would be supplies, materials, equipment, repairs to equipment that would fall under the purchasing agent's purview.
Okay.
But when it comes down to payment warrants for things that a court orders, for example, that, you know, they don't fall under the purchasing agent's responsibility.
Attorney fees, things like that.
Yes, sir. Things like, you know, once a telephone services contract has been entered, the monthly telephone bills, those don't need to go to purchasing, you know. Once we have a utility contract in place, the monthly utility bills don't need to go to purchasing. Those things would just go through as payment warrants. There's really no need to put those through on a requisition, and I think we could lighten the burden on purchasing a little bit by shouldering some of that for her.
Okay, now normally I sign the payment warrants. Will I be able to do that electronically?
I am told you will be able to. If we can't do that, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board on some of this, because we're going to have to have these functionalities in the system if it's going to be reliable.
Okay, does any commissioner have any questions about this?
Well, are we getting the cart before the horse by having the procedures before we see how it actually works? I mean, I understand by law you're required to do that. I understand that part, but I mean, let's be logical, and are we, I mean, we, the court very seldom buys anything. We pay for everything, but we very seldom buy anything, so we're passing a policy here that, I mean, are we, as a treasurer and the purchasing agent and you, are we solid here? You're 100 percent the way this is going to work? I mean...
Yes, sir, and if it doesn't, we've instructed Tyler to set the system up so that if this doesn't pan out, we carry on just like we are, and we print everything.
Well, I don't like that idea because that's a waste of what we bought the system for.
Right, but, and we will be committed to making them deliver on what they promise, but to answer your question, I don't believe it's premature to plan for the functionality and to allow for this to go forward, understanding that if it just doesn't work, we'll make it work by printing paper forms as we do now.
Which is one of the big benefits of Tyler, we didn't have to do that.
Nelda, where we at on this and your end of it, in your business, in your office?
In my office, the training is being instructed through the IT department as far as Andrew is the point of contact for that. I've only seen the system once or twice. I know that if you are accustomed to computers somewhat, I think they would pick it up okay. If they're not, if you struggle already, you're going to struggle. Scanning in documents is totally new for a lot of these people, and they're going to have to learn how to attach them. It's going to be six months of work before it swells out. That's with any computer system. We know there are going to be issues. Alls I can tell you is we're going to try and work through them. I personally, and like the judge, I think that without the RFE, that, it will test you. It will.
I thought that was a purchasing policy, that to have an RFE prior to, that I don't know why we just don't make that, that you have to have that. If it's a policy that we've passed...
Right. And that's what it is in the policy book. Policy book has not been changed.
Because, you know, you and I both know that we've all had issues about this. No RFE and...
I think once we get into it, if we come to the part, we are having trouble getting people to put these paperwork through, that we stop it there and we let them come to court and explain what is going on.
I don't want any RFE accepted as general. I want, I'd like to have it very specific of what we're buying.
Well, how does, you know, let's talk about credit cards, since that seems to be a hot topic in the last couple of weeks. How does that work for after-hours for the DA that's working a murder case, or the sheriff is working something over the weekend, or animal control? How will that work with a new system?
I don't, because our, we don't issue POs for the credit cards because they are paid from a statement. It goes to that individual department right now. I don't see a lot of change in that, if any. If it's an emergency, they are to write the emergency. There is a section in the policy manual strictly for emergencies. If it's not an emergency, they need to wait till the next one.
Yeah, but that's why I was fixing to say, I sure don't want to make it easier to go use a card and they just avoid the system then, because that's what you just said in a nutshell, is I don't want to have to fill out the RFE and get approval, so I'll just go use the credit card.
Well, I can only take it when somebody tells me that it's an emergency, that it is. I don't know of any abuse of that. I've not seen it as far as emergency.
My understanding is that anytime anyone utilizes a purchasing card for the county for that transaction, they are acting as an assistant to the purchasing agent, and they are subject to all the rules of her office, and they are subject in that transaction to all of the provisions of law when it comes down to the behaviors required of a purchasing agent or an assistant purchasing agent.
And I think a lot of people understand that if I don't do it correctly, if I don't follow the local government code, and I do something wrong, I can go to jail. That means that if they're doing it wrong, they can go to jail. They don't realize that, even though we've tried to shut it out. It's in local government code and it's written that way. I think Jeff can tell you, he read it not long ago, and he realized that I am trying to do the correct thing.
Stan, don't you see this, though? I mean, everybody, not everybody, but most of the people wanted this new system. So we, you know, we're at that point now where change is going to be tough. Some people don't like change, but don't you see, I mean, in six months, if we work out the bugs and it works like it's supposed to, we have to work with the ones that have issues, that it won't be an issue in six months?
Possibly. You know, when we talk to the conversion analysts, they talk in terms of a year before everybody's really comfortable with it.
Okay, well, a year then.
In the meantime, in the absence of this policy, the judge still has to sign every requisition, and we still have to circulate all the papers, so it eliminates the possibility of us using that functionality while we're learning.
What does someplace like Tarrant County do? I mean, when you go to the judge's office and he's got a stack of papers on his desk the size of two Fort Worth phone books, and he spends two hours a day signing them, what does a bigger county do, Nelda?
I honestly don't know.
There are two options under the law. One is to adopt a policy procedure like this. The other option is to just for the court to exempt the judge from signing it. I strongly discourage you from doing that because the consequence of doing that is we have to bring the Kate, the crate of all of the items, and every item has to be considered in open court one by one. I would suggest to you that every one of the larger counties has already adopted a procedure and a policy like this that allows for an electronic requisitioning system. It doesn't require it in every instance. You can still print an item if you think it's in the county's best interest, but it does allow for the possibility so that the items the judge has to sit down and review and physically sign would be drastically reduced.
Has the county attorney seen this procedure?
Over the years, several times.
No, I mean this one?
I do not know.
I'll make a motion that we accept this procedure as we move forward based on the county attorney's review.
All right. Have a motion made by Commissioner Barry to accept the administrative procedures for electronic requisition systems. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout, and that is dependent on the county attorney's approval. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carried. Consider, thank you, Stan. Consider remaining YMCA financing of 3.5, and if approved, then direct the auditor of First Southwest to seek bids.
Judge and Commissioners, this is the summary that has been received from Jim Sabonis and Penny Booker at First Southwest, and what they had on the schedule was that if it meets the court's approval, that you would instruct First Southwest and myself to proceed for either obtaining bids for this debt or finding a suitable private placement. If they were given the go-ahead to do that today, they're saying that by March 20th, they could have the pricing done, and then on March 25th, they could have that come back to the court for you to decide whether you wanted to accept the bid or not. for you to decide whether you wanted to accept the bid or not, and then thereafter have the Attorney General approve the sale and then have something available on April 22nd.
I know Commissioner Barry has been working with about, the why about the term, when they're going to have all of this done? And how does this fall within that timeframe, Commissioner?
Well, for our meeting yesterday, Judge, I mean, if you look at the last sheet on here, what Stan's done is ask them, I believe, if I'm wrong, I misspeak, you can correct me, Stan, but 2016 to 2017, if principal amount is only 65 and 60, they basically are going to rear-load that principal then. I mean, we, we'll still pay our interest, but the principal is going to be a smaller amount, so that...
We were trying to avoid... Any requirement that the debt service tax rate be raised?
The email that Todd Baker and I talked about yesterday, Judge, that you and I talked about at 5:00 yesterday afternoon, was that it will take five to six months to do the permitting, the plans, and the dirt work. And then it's a 12 to 14-month project. So, he said, you know, the county's portion will probably be around $750,000 to a million between now and the start of construction, which would be in six months' time, late, you know, August or September. So, but, you know, when Stan went back and changed, and we've got this at 65 and 60, I believe it's the fire trucks, and I mean, we've talked about it twice in the last week. I believe the fire trucks roll off in the first quarter of next year. I believe that $438,000 rolls off the debt service. So...
Thought we were already done with that.
Okay. One of the, it's $430-something thousand rolls off, so...
Back to annex.
Stan's concern, I believe, is that we've got to get this approved by the Attorney General. So, I just don't want it to hamper us to be able to borrow more money for...
Capital equipment.
Capital equipment that other people need, so...
And you don't think it will?
Well, I mean, you have that option. The county has excellent credit. I think as you look at this, you see the $65,000 principal each year. That pretty well bumps us up in those years against the current debt service tax rate. So, if you add any more debt service to it, then more than likely you're looking at something of an increase in the debt service tax rate.
Well, I don't think we can have a crystal ball and tell what's going to happen with the lake. And I think 2016 to 2017 is going to buy us a little time till we know what we're going to be dealing with on the added loan values of the lake.
Okay. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Now, one question I have, Stan, is why are we deferring the principal amount the first two years, for '14 and '15?
For debt service?
It is a, it's a management technique so that we try to reduce the amount of the principal that comes due in that year, or in those two years, so that we forestall that to future years. If you look at the way that the debt service is mapped out, we're bumping up against $3 million a year, 2.8 million, 2.9 million, nearly $3 million a year, each year. And to pay for that, we have to set a tax rate in the debt service fund of about 5.25 cents per $100 evaluation. And that funds the debt service for that year. The proposal that Jim Sabonis brought two weeks ago to you indicated a one-half cent tax increase in the debt service tax rate, because he was planning on having a couple hundred thousand dollars in those years of debt service. By reducing that by $200,000 a year, it pretty much eliminated that requirement for the one-half cent tax rate increase in the debt service. We're on a very aggressive program of reducing long-term debt. And so, after two or three years, our fixed debt is going to drop from $3 million a year down to about $1,005,000. And that gives us more capacity in later years to add more debt service. The county has recently refreshed all of its debt, so that there's, there's very little debt that the county has that was implemented any earlier than 2009. You know, we just don't have any longstanding debt issues. We're, the court's been very aggressive...
Justice Center and stuff like that.
Right. You know, the large, big-ticket items.
Okay. We'll still be paying interest payments, correct?
That's correct.
That's about 70 grand a year?
That really depends on...
It's 2%.
The interest rate.
Yeah.
You know, we're already, we've already got the 6.5 million, which was the first section of that 10 million, and that's at a very good interest rate. We were hoping to come in with a similar, very good interest rate on this issue also.
All right. Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Thank you very much, Stan. Miscellaneous, this is see, discuss, and consider and take appropriate action regarding allowing the county employee time off to attend health fair at, on March 20th, at the Church of Christ, Commissioner Precinct Four?
Judge and commissioners, I believe that Bob Blessing and Robbie Rushing have a handout or maybe a little description. March 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., is our first annual, our first-ever county fair. And I wanted Bob and Robbie to be able to talk a little bit about what's going to happen. Last month, the three of us attended the Blue Cross Blue Shield, Texas Association of Counties kickoff, so to speak. And Blue Cross Blue Shield is trying to lower their premiums, because they don't know what's going to happen with Affordable Care Act, by actually trying to get the county employees more healthy, so to speak. And so, I believe, Judge, you were one of the four of us that went to Ellis County about three years ago and witnessed their health fair. It's going to have, you know, with the help of Lake Grand Bay Medical Center and a lot of the area doctors, I'll let Bob or Robbie talk a little bit about what we're going to have and what's going to happen.
Robbie actually put this thing together a little bit.
She's overwhelmingly excited about it.
Thank you, Bob. Good morning. This is very, very exciting for the county. It's very proactive, being proactive for our, all of our employees. We are fortunate enough, and we decided in the office and talked to a couple of commissioners, to also include adult probation. They are not under our umbrella, but they are part of our county. They're very important. And we're being so proactive without their even knowing that we are being so proactive about their health and their health care. When we went to the conference in Austin, they were talking about entities that, and this, I see this coming, charging tax for people who smoke, charging tax to people who are overweight, they're, they take their BMI and they're overweight. Well, with our first annual health fair, we are putting that in the forefront with, the sheriff is very, very proactive about this. And he, and, I mean, it's taking some, talking to folks about this is what is going on. It's come and go. They can go and have screenings. They can go and get information. It is only health, it is only for their health. We're not selling anything. And there's also two entities that are going to be at the health fair about financial health, and we're excited about that. But, this is a proactive fair in order to get health to the forefront. So, next year, or the next year, or the next year, depending on the Affordable Care Act, they will not have to pay penalties because they will have lost weight. They will have stopped smoking. They will, I mean, all of those different things. But, it's very, very, it's going to be very good. We're very excited. And it's just to make them realize, yeah, that is part of who you are, working for Hood County. We want you to be healthy. We want you to take care of yourself, and this is the way to do it. We're going to kick it off, and we're putting it to the forefront.
Gentlemen, if you look at the green sheet, this is a list of all the vendors that are going to be there. We're going to have 34 booths, and it's quite, quite a list of people. As Commissioner Barry said, the hospital's been very proactive about being involved in this. And I think they have, what, seven booths?
Mm-hmm.
Also, I gave you a sheet that's going to go out to the employees, and this kind of just tells what we're going to be doing. Cholesterol screenings, blood pressure, EKGs. We're going to do five leads. They can actually, besides mammogram, the women can actually have pap smears if they so wish. This also is an outlay of how this is going to be set up.
At the Church of Christ?
At the Church of Christ, over here right by MHMR. But, I want her to get all the credit for this.
Oh, yes.
Nothing would have happened had it been for Robbie. She's been the driver. She's called all the people that have donated. She's talked, she's put all these booths together.
One reason we wanted it to be around March 20th, it will coincide with the kickoff of Healthy County, where we walk with our pedometers.
Correct.
Also, Breann at the Texas AgriLife is going to do a walk across Texas at the same time, which is community-oriented, not just employee-oriented. And the fact is, as Bob said, you know, we're going to have cholesterol, blood pressure checks, blood drive. The Carter Blood Mobile will be here. Texas Health Mobile Unit will be here as well. So, she's done a great job. It's open to any spouse as well. That's covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield under our umbrella. It's, it, what they're, you know, when we go to Austin, they break us in two groups. They break us in administrative side, and then they break us in what Robbie and Bob went to. But, they're talking about, we don't know what the Affordable Care Act's going to cost us, possibly 20, 30% additional. And what Blue Cross Blue Shield is doing is they paid for the whole conference when we were there in February, and they're also, every employee that fills out their health assessment gets $35 gift card. They're trying to get people to change the way they do things, to lower premiums, so we'll be proactive. A lot of the counties across the state we dealt with have older employees, and we're dealing with catastrophic illnesses, as cancer or hip replacements and so forth and so on. But, lunch will be served. It'll be a healthy-type lunch. But, what the court needs to do today is to get behind this and back it, but also suspend the policy for that one day so that it doesn't affect our treasurer's department as far as letting employees go to the health fair, one or two hours in the morning, one or two hours in the afternoon, and overlap their lunch.
Right.
Okay? We can't make them go. We can't make them go to lunch there, but at least we're giving them the opportunity. So, that way, it won't be a nightmare for timekeeping. It would just be an issue that we can allow them to go. Hopefully, each department head and elected official will work with their employees so that they run a skeleton crew if they have to be open through the lunch hour. They can go an hour or two, walk around. There's a lot of things that Robbie did that we saw at Ellis County where they gave away, we don't, we accepted three of them today on the consent agenda. But, there's some nice items that will be given away to try to get people there. Think about the fact that a lot of these doctors and people have given their time to be there. We want people to show up. But, you've got to have, I believe, 17 stamps or whatever they're going to do.
Every booth you go to has stickers.
You'll have stickers. And when you get a sticker on, you have to have at least half of them, put a sticker on here, to drop it in the box, to have drawings, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's what the prizes that we've been accepting were. And the community stepped up and accepted what we're doing as well. So, I really just need the court's blessing. And the fact is, when we get the calls on the 18th or 19th, how am I going to let my employees go, or they don't want to go, whatever?
And I've had, I've had conversations about that, because they, they will call me and say, you know, I only have a lunch, but I think I can fit it in. They've, these are regular employees. And I said, well, you know, we're working on that. We'll see what happens, and maybe you can go. And, well, I can use sick time and go. I said, let...
We don't want to use holiday, I don't want them to use holiday or sick time, because that's, you know, it's kind of like making people go to the doctor when they're really not, when they've got a sick kid, which costs us copay. That's as, that's as crazy as Affordable Care Act.
I talked to the treasurer. Kathy told me that what people need to do is out in the remarks section for HR.
Okay. I mean, I think we have intelligent enough and smart enough elected officials appointed to let them work it out amongst their group. But, I just want the court's blessing so that HR is not in the middle of it and the treasurer doesn't have to get in the middle of it, so that we have a fun event, not a problem.
We want, we want people to enjoy this.
Kathy, do you have, you know, anything in this particular we need to do or suspend, or just what we're doing?
The only concern that I have is that somebody will call me and say, I'll set the health fair to that, which I work from 6:00. As long as they understand how the fair doesn't count for...
Hey.
You're not going to use, that's your favorite saying. You can't make time to make, use time to make time?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I mean, that's, I mean, it'll be one or two that'll make an issue for the whole 350 employees, I realize, but it's a step in the right direction.
That's right.
All right. Before we vote there, or take a motion, I really want to thank you, Robbie and Bob, for taking this.
Before we vote, Judge, I also have to say that, you know, Robbie's poured her blood, I mean, her part is sold into this. And the 20th is a Thursday, and her last day with the county is the 21st. She's going to leave and go stay close to her grandkids in Houston. But, you know, a lot of people ride out their last two weeks and just get through it. She's, she's been doing this the whole time, and I appreciate it, and it'll be hard to replace you.
Well, thank you, Robbie. And also, I'd like to commend the commissioner for his part in making sure that all this is successful. So, thank you, Steve.
Yeah. Well, Dixie Lee did a lot for us as well at the hospital.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to allow the county employees to take time off to attend the health...
Being sick or vacation.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tout. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. Consider take appropriate action regarding a notice to be distributed. Does this say's notice?
Yes, yes, Judge. That notice, and I've got to figure out where all the bathrooms are, because everybody goes to a bathroom. So, I put that on the wall and on the door. But, honestly, that is going to go in every newsletter. And I know some people don't read the newsletter, but it's, will go in every newsletter. Those are already printed. They've already been delivered to the treasurer. And then I'm going to take those extra copies, and they have to go into break rooms or something, because I just want them to know about it. We have our 24/7 guys that I really watch out for, and gals, and that's in the sheriff's department. And the sheriff's office has been very, very good to let them know about that, because the not-time guys, they'll have to get up and come to the health fair. Other folks I watch out for. And these are people that don't really have email. That's who I really watch out for, is road ops. And, but, they, the road ops guys are very good to come to the health assessment section when we have that. They're good, they're, they are good to show up at things. And I want to commend both the sheriff and Donald about getting, you know, letting their guys come and make time to come to these events, because they certainly don't have to. Road ops is as busy as they can be, and I'm in the sheriff's department. That's like a given. But, that will go in the newsletter, and then those are also going to be posted in, like, in offices, in Tona's office, in Nelda's office, where those folks can, can come to it. I do want to say that the Harris Health Mobile and Carter Blood Bank, they were so pleased and fairly shocked that those lists, because I had to get those lists filled in order for them to come over here. And those lists filled nearly immediately. And now, we have a waiting list for Carter Blood Mobile. So, that, they were very, very, very excited about that.
Great, great. Well, thank you. Do I have a motion to regarding a notice to be distributed to county officials and staff, information pertinent to attending the health fair?
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Barry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Maintenance, consider and take appropriate action to move to, move the Highway Patrol to the LEC.
Morning, Judge, commissioners. In an effort to realign our use of Annex III, one of the things that we would like to do is move the Highway Patrol Office back to the LEC in the area that's been vacated by the sheriff and his administrative staff. This small amount of work that needs to be done up there to make it usable for them would be funded from Sheriff Deed's abandoned vehicle account. Just need y'all's approval for him to move.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the move from the Highway Patrol to the LEC.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Tout. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Discuss take appropriate action on replacement of ashtrays at the county buildings.
About 12 years ago, when we originally placed these items at county buildings, I got the court's approval on the location of where they went. So we've got a new building now, and it was my intention to get approval of a location, which would be on the backside of the EOC. There's 56 feet between the back doors. Directly in between those two doors would put us in full compliance with the city's
So if they're, if it's raining, they're just going to stand out in the rain? Is that your plan?
Not smoke.
Or not smoke? I mean, I...
We don't have, there's no place that's 15 feet or more from a usable window, door, or ventilation system that's covered. We had the same issues on all, on all of our, because all of them are out in the open.
You're just following the policy for the cities, I mean, you're just trying to get in code is what you're asking for today, right?
Yes, sir.
So just, the motion is, I mean, it's crazy. We've got ashtrays on here, two down from having Healthy County. But you're just asking to be within compliance at all county buildings to go around so that we can deal with that, is what you're asking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Allow building maintenance to work out the 15 feet from all county buildings and make sure they're mounted according to city code.
Okay. So any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion carried. Consider take appropriate action to approve the placing of the 1890 desk on loan to the Hood County Historic Commission in the main hallway of the Hood County Courthouse for public viewing and HCHC display use. Do, I have someone that would like to come up and, and explain that? Thank you, Mary, for volunteering. I saw you being volunteered. Thank you, Vic. Okay, Mary.
What we have here is a bookkeeper's desk that we've dated to 1890. It was made by the A.H. Andrews Company of Chicago, and they went out of business in the early 1890s after going into the metal furniture manufacturing business. But they had been a major, the major furniture manufacturer in Chicago during the 1880s. This desk is being offered to the Historical Commission by Interbank down in Stephenville. We went down and spoke with Jerry Campbell. Jerry Campbell had offered it to Michael Carmichael. And we have been looking for a desk to complement the historical room with the courthouse. We were looking for a little shorter one, but now we have one that's 12 feet long, and it would be foolish not to accept that offer because it is a very rare desk at this point in time. And we have dated it to approximately 1890, so it does fit in with the age of the courthouse. And it would be a fairly unique item to have in the courthouse for people to see. It will be protected by our video camera that sweeps up and down the hallway, and if anyone carves their name in it, they'll be on film. It's, and it's too heavy to carry out the door, that's for sure.
It'll replace one of the benches that's there now.
Yes.
It's over by the stairwell going down to the basement.
Yeah, so it has the same footprint as that bench.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to allow them placing and accept it on loan, this 1890 desk.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda, if I can get it separated here, is consider and take appropriate action to reschedule the Tuesday, May 13th Commissioners Court meeting to allow the Commissioners and county judge to attend the North and East Texas Judges and Commissioners Conference.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It will be one day earlier on Monday, May the 12th. All right. Purchasing, consider and take appropriate action to approve the contract RFP 2014-002 for hot mix asphalt concrete with Vulcan Materials Company.
We received permission from y'all to issue the bid, and it was received. We only had one respondent. And in conjunction with the Director of Road Ops, it is recommended that we award this to Vulcan Materials.
What's the length of the contract?
We're going to do, we have the option of doing a year or six months. We can do it, renew it every six months. And at that time, we are planning to possibly rebid so that we can obtain also an alternate vendor.
Will I entertain a motion to approve this contract?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action to approve contract RFP 2014-001 Portland Cement with Ingram Concrete.
This is another one that we bid out, that we received permission from you to do that. We did only have one respondent. Don and I have talked numerous times in the past, and we do have trouble getting someone to bid on the concrete. I suggest, and so does he, that we award it to Ingram. Right now, that I know of, there's no plans to rebid it in six months. It's for a year.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Taut to approve the RFP 2014-001 Portland Cement Contract with Ingram Concrete. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nelda. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the certs, Texas County Road Grants, Commissioner, Precinct One.
Yeah, Judge, I've talked to several...
This is A, this is A, I think we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've talked to several counties that bordered us. E-Rath County, I think Steve has talked to Johnson County. And there's a lot of gray areas in this, in this search deal. There's also a Webb County attorney that has issues with it, and I'd like to make a motion that we just dissolve this.
All right. I may have a motion made by Commissioner Dever to not pursue the cert grant base year. I believe there's some attorney, it's gone to the Attorney General on the constitutionality of this, this whole thing. So do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion carried. Discuss and consider approval of the transportation infrastructure, the TIF Road Improvement Priority Plan, including estimate of cost of each road submitted in application, the county submitted applications, Texas. Who's taking this?
Sir, I guess I am, sir.
All right.
There's really no point of discussing that if you're not going to create the other thing.
Correct. Okay, so this is the dead deal?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Chloe. All right. Discuss and consider approval of the Amendment of the Annual County Commissioner Road Report.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Done. It all tied together.
All right. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action regarding moving the Veterans Office from Annex Three to the courthouse. Ms. Malin?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners Court. It's about time. No, I'm just kidding. We took a look at the, at that corner office in the courthouse. It's perfect for, for veteran services. It's a nice private area. You know, it has that private entrance. There's not a lot of traffic going back and forth. The new ramp there is perfect. I've, I've got a wheelchair, so if any of the veterans need to use it, there's plenty of parking for disabled, you know, disabled parking or handicap parking. So it's a perfect spot. We're ready to go.
I tell you, just as a side note, she was down looking at that, and I've never seen anybody so excited about an office.
Always wanted to work on the square.
Are you sad that you're having to move to the courthouse?
It's been, ever since I moved to Granbury, I've always wanted to work on the square.
That's a good location for the veterans.
It's perfect, and they'll like it, too.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve, allow the Veterans Office to move into the courthouse.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Linda.
Appreciate it.
Discuss and take appropriate action regarding request and approval for purchase through Fund 55 of cameras, vehicle cameras, Constable Precinct Two.
Commissioners, Judge, the item before you is just simple, replacing the Cop Sync camera that never worked in, in the, in the Constable's vehicle, Precinct Two, with the L3 Mobile Vision camera. The reason for bringing this before you today is the fact that there is additional monies that needed to be approved because of the, the cost for the Cop Sync and the difference with Mobile Vision. And I think you'll see that the quote was for, Mobile Vision is $4,930.25. The approval for Cop Sync was somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000, $3,900 and something dollars, so roughly just $4,000. So we're looking at a little more money to be approved to have a camera put in, in the vehicle now.
Hey, Dwayne?
Sir?
Well, do we know these or what y'all want, or kind of don't know yet, or kind of a gray area, or?
No, sir. And we used to have, when I was with the Sheriff's Department, the first video systems we had was Mobile Vision. They were the old VHS systems. VHS went by the wayside, digital come in, and then there's a bunch of other companies then it come, come across. When, and I was involved whenever we went from VHS to digital with the Sheriff's Department with Sheriff Deeds. And I did some research on this, and it was, there were two companies, and it was between Arbitrator and, and Mobile Vision. And the sheriff opted to go with the Arbitrator because the city was already established. This is basically the same system on a smaller scale, of course.
Right.
Because it's just one vehicle for me. And if I'm, if I'm not overstepping my bounds, Mike, I believe y'all, you and Joe are going with WatchGuard, is that correct? For y'all's new cameras in y'all's, in y'all's vehicles? And WatchGuard, they're, they opted to go with WatchGuard for the same reason. Cop Sync didn't work in their vehicles either. So that's the, that's the reason for the extra monies needed.
It was free. Okay. Jeff, you have a question?
Now, this is the same item that you've got on that, on that waste list that we had for the Fund 55, correct?
Fund 55, yes. Well, the Cop Sync was already pre-approved, well, it was approved, and we had them put in our vehicles. It didn't work, so we had them taken out. The monies was never expended for those systems. All I'm asking for is the additional monies to make, to make the camera work in, to make a camera work in our vehicle, or my vehicle.
Would that system that Constable Three and Constable One have not work for you? I don't understand why, I don't understand why we're going to have a different system in all these different cars. I mean, there's no continuity.
There is no continuity for, well, there doesn't have to be a continuity for, like Cop Sync, we were all the same because it entailed a lot of, a lot of information gathering, and we got a price break on that. It didn't work. They couldn't make it work. Precinct Four still hasn't gotten, gotten it working, and they still have them in their cars. I opted to go with the Mobile Vision. It is, it's cheaper. I can get the camera cheaper than what WatchGuard is going to provide in Precinct One and Precinct Three.
So I guess I'm confused. I, WatchGuard, have we, have we bought WatchGuard already?
Wasn't that, wasn't that given for a year?
Approved, my understanding, Commissioners, WatchGuard was pre-approved at a previous Commissioners Court meeting for Precincts One and Three, for them to put that in their vehicles.
But we didn't pay anything for it, I don't believe.
I don't know.
Mike, did we pay anything for the WatchGuard system?
I don't have the WatchGuard system yet. What Constable Hart is speaking on is, back when One and Three redid their vehicles or had vehicles, that was in part of the package of the vehicle.
The what?
The option didn't work. The money was approved for it.
Okay.
Optioning. Didn't work, so it was sent back at no cost. So there has to be a replacement put into the vehicle for the camera system, and this is the replacement for that.
But it's, it's different than the one you and Constable E have?
Yes, his is.
He's thinking, yeah, he's thinking y'all's body cams, which was free, I think.
We all have the, we all have the bodies.
Seven body cameras.
Right.
Okay.
That are free, that are totally different than the vehicle cameras.
Okay.
The engine car system.
And they were, they were at no cost. Mike worked with that and got those on a demo set, and they're, they're at no cost, which is different from what we're asking for, for the mobile cameras.
So One and Three have already got preapproval, they're in that original package, when you bought your Tahos and all of the equipment that goes in there for your camera, vehicle cameras, right?
That was in the, in the pack.
Okay.
And you're just wanting...
That was pre-approved for them.
Yeah.
I didn't have that package because I didn't get new vehicles and everything, so, and I never had a camera, there was never a camera purchased for Precinct Two's vehicle, and that's what this is.
Anybody else have any questions for the Constable?
How many miles are on your truck?
$68,360 as of this morning.
So you made a comment that Precinct Four, Constables like using one either?
Using...
They don't have a camera in their car?
Precinct Four has three of the Cop Sync cameras, VidTAC cameras, that they're still trying to, to get to work that we all had, all the Constables had in the beginning, and they're still not working. So he's, Chad's still trying to get them to work, but they're, they're not working. I spoke with Roger the day before yesterday, and he, he and Matt still can't get VidTAC and Cop Sync. Cop Sync works good, they say. It's the camera that they can't get to, to come into play, the VidTAC.
Well, what's y'all's pleasure on Constable Hart's request for camera for, vehicle camera for Precinct Two, out of Fund 55?
What's the total cost?
The quote that I got from Mobile Vision is $4,930.25. That includes the, of course, the front camera, the rear seat camera, all installation, ready to go.
Is there a monthly fee associated with that?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Jackie?
It does not tie into the computers, it doesn't tie into the, nothing, sir. Yeah, just the difference, the, there was a previous... Yeah, just the difference, the, there was a previous-
Wait a minute, what's the total we gotta spend? Because we haven't spent anything.
We're gonna spend $4,930.
And 25 cents.
25 cents.
That's the total amount?
That's, that gets that camera installed in my pickup and working.
Because we haven't spent anything. I mean, we may have earmarked it in a budget time, but we haven't spent anything.
No, sir.
Jackie, well, these work with the computers or whatever we have to have, because we had a big deal with Arbitrator, and that's why we try to get everybody on the same page. So, will these, do we have a problem with, with them syncing with anything we're trying to do, with downloads or whatever else?
The downloads that are used by the Constables, they usually manage those themselves, but this system does not synchronize back to the arbitrator server that we have in the data center. It, it does not tie into that system. They will manually take these, these videos and handle those themselves.
It's a complete standalone system, not, not in conjunction with anything that IT has in, and, or the Sheriff's Department, the Arbitrator. It, it records to its own DVD, or DVR, or whatever they call them, and it's downloaded to some other source, not, not into the arbitrator system.
Well, how to, do you have all of that equipment to download it and everything? Is that it?
Nothing to have. It records to DVR, comes onto a, an SD, or a flash card, or whatever you wanna call them. And then it's downloaded into a, we're gonna buy a, an external hard drive, and to kind of go in conjunction with IT to get all of our videos and cameras off of the county computer. It's been taking up some space, and we've gotten several emails in regards to that. Is that correct, Jackie? Yes. We're, we're gonna get all of our pictures and all of our videos off of the county computer. We're gonna get a, we're gonna try to get a standalone hard drive and put all of that on there. We're alleviating some, some space on the county computer.
So, the, the previous question is not really correct, because there is some more cost for that hard drive, the external hard drive.
External hard drive, I've got a quote of 70, 70 something dollars. I'm got a-
So, it's basically 5,000?
Yes, sir. Well, I was just gonna take that out of my supply line item. I, I budget money for that.
All right, I have a motion. Yeah, my, my issue is, I mean, we're already considering that all the Fund 55 items in another, in another forum, and if we approve one now, I mean, I'd like to wait until we get everything set, get with Stan, and make sure we have the money in Fund 55.
Well, not to cloud this any further, there was already a previous amount of 3,900 and something, I don't remember the exact cost, previously in Fund 55 approved for each one of the Constable's vehicles.
Cop sync, right.
For cop sync, yes, sir. All I'm asking for additional is the difference-
That money's not there anymore, though.
That money's gone.
That's correct. When was that approved?
January, I believe.
I don't think it was January.
I don't remember.
I don't know.
Well, I agree with Jeff. I mean, we've had two meetings, and we're working on Fund 55 and expenditures, and if we let you do it, Dwayne, not that you don't need it, but if you let you do it, then how do we tell somebody no in two weeks?
I understand. Well, I brought this before you. I knew there was an additional expense involved, and it has to be, it has to be approved. There's not just a procedure just to go out and get it, because it was previously, previously approved for a different system, now I'm putting in a different system, and there's more monies, that more monies has got to be approved, and you gentlemen have to have that, y'all, y'all get that luxury.
Motion to table.
Motion to, made by Commissioner Berry to table this, till we can get Fund 55 worked out, to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the motion carried. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the following items to be placed on Courthouse Square, raise awareness of the Child Abuse Prevention Month, and let's allow CASA, y'all wanna come forward, CASA to place 75 flags on the courthouse, similar to the Independence Day Texas flags. Jean Kate is gonna make that presentation.
First of all, Judge, Commissioners, thank you very much for the proclamation. Last year, CASA Hood Somerville served as guardian light in for over 165 children, and of course, the CAC has had considerably more than that. So, child abuse is a serious situation in Hood County, and anything that can call attention to it, to make the public aware, preventing it, we certainly appreciate. CASA Hood Somerville would like to display flags, you'll notice that they're much smaller than the American flags that flew at Texas Independence Day, and the judge did mention that the flags that had been placed there before were impeding people walking down the sidewalk. These will be set where they will not be going up and down the sidewalk, and they would be placed the same way that the flags were with the rebar and the-
Yeah, I think you need to coordinate that with our maintenance, so we won't be driving, you know, into our pipes for our geothermal wells. Okay, just coordinate with the county. All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the, allowing them to place these 75 flags?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut, I mean, Dever, seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion carried. Caitlin Ray wants to place some big blue ribbons in the corner of the courthouse, and six feet tall, and placed on, I mean, they're made out of plywood, right? Four by eight sheets of plywood. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us both to be here. As Ms. Kate said, it's fully important that the community is aware that child abuse is, you know, living in Hood County, and the more attention that we can draw to that, hopefully the more people will become aware and work to prevent that, and call it to the appropriate attention of law enforcement, CPS, when that occurs. In Hood County, we have fiscal year, last fiscal year, we had just under 300 confirmed cases of child abuse. Now, that's, you know, the cases that had enough evidence to go to trial or to continue with law enforcement. I gave to you, and if you'll pardon my very poor AutoCAD type drawing here, right now we are working with Home Depot. They have graciously offered their services and their materials. I'm working with Larry Jones and getting the appropriate dimensions and appropriate mockups and everything done. We would like to cut out ribbons from plywood in order to be a better focal point for people to be able to see, you know, what's going on. You guys have been so supportive the last two years. The first year, we put the pinwheels in the grass around the courthouse, which impeded mowing, I heard. So, we don't wanna hamper your efforts. Last year, we put them in pots around the courthouse, thank you again, but we felt like it wasn't a very big focal point for people to see. So, this would create a good focal point. We would like to also attach to the front of the ribbons a, a box, a planter, if you will, for small pinwheel gardens. These are the same type pinwheels that we've used in the previous years, and we'd like to plant those in each planter box to represent the children of Hood County who were both the confirmed cases and those children who were missed, you know, that weren't able to be in the confirmed case list, I guess, if you put it that way.
I think the judge, he asked Ms. Kate to do, just work, if you don't have a number and you need Tim Flowers' number, we'll work with Tim Flowers to make sure wherever you put it up, we don't drive it to the sprinkler system, but I'll make a motion to approve, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Berry to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut to allow six-foot by four-foot cutout ribbons, planters at the corners of the square. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is approved. It is now 10:20, and we're adjourned.